Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our regular meeting, City Council meeting, City of La Sourd, December 13, 2001. This time I will call our meeting to order. We'll begin with the pledge of allegiance. Council members, you've all been presented the agenda for tonight. You've had a chance to review it. At this time, I will take any motions to approve the agenda. Mr. Schlitter?
Mayor, I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. I'd like to move item number seven, comments and items of appreciation to before the closed session.
So we have a motion to accept the agenda, moving the comments and report items of appreciation ahead of closing the meeting.
So moved.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any other second, Mr.?
That was a second, I believe. Oh, Schlitter made the motion.
Okay, who seconded?
Oh, sure.
Okay, it's Mr. Swanberg. Thank you. Any comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Moving on to the consent agenda, all items on the consent agenda are considered routine and have been made available to the city council at least two days in advance of the meeting. The items will be enacted in one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests. In which event, the item will be removed from the agenda and considered in normal sequence. At this time, I'll have our city administrator, Mr. Kruegel, go through these consent agenda items with us.
Thank you, Mayor Kirby, members of city council. Tonight, we have the meeting minutes from the previous meeting for approval. Then we have dispersments totaling just over $1.4 million. Items of note are payments to Bolton Bank for the Water System Improvement Project, totaling just over $31,000. Our annual kinetic lease payment of $228,000. Pay application, which is on the consent agenda for the water tower project, just totaling over $247,000. Well, number eight pay application, which is on consent agenda for $137,000. And then our purchase power for just over $565,000. Next, we have next, we have personnel actions, and that's the hiring of a Zamboni driver. The fourth item, we have the High Zone Redundant Waterline Service Flow Booster Project. That's securing engineering for that project. The four E, we have the approved pay application, number three, for Magny Construction, related to well number eight. Four F, we have approved the pay application, number seven, to landmark structures for the water tower project. Four G, we have the retirement benefit level increase for the La Sourd Fire Department. That's moving them from $5,000 to $5,300 per year of service. For H, we have the CASA 22 right-of-way plat memo. That was an addition to the agenda on Friday, and that is to document the actual right-of-way and the drainage and utility easements for the CASA 22 project, kind of in that Elmwood Avenue area. And then we have a variance request that went to the Planning Commission for 112 Woods Drive. There's a resolution attached to that. And that's related to a second driveway to the unique property up there on Woods Drive to allow access to a shed. So those are the items on your consent agenda tonight. I'll entertain any questions if there are any.
Anybody, any questions at this time regarding consent agenda? This is your opportunity to ask. Otherwise, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan.
Seconded by Mr. Schlitter.
Any comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? The ayes have it. Consent agenda has been passed. Moving on to the public comment. Public comment provides an opportunity for the public to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Persons wishing to make a comment must sign up in advance of the meeting on a sheet provided and identify themselves by providing their name and address. As of right now, we have one community member would like to address council. Mr. Dana Allen?
If I may, we'll invite Dana to come up after the budget presentation, part of the truth and taxation. It seems to be related to the levy.
Okay, very good. Is you okay with that? Thank you. Thank you. No, you guys are welcome to stick around if you wish, but your action on the consent agenda has been passed. So, thank you. And thank you for coming tonight. They were looking for a queue. Okay. Okay, the first item on our agenda for tonight is six A, it'd be the 2022 budget and levy items. So, starting with the Truth and Taxation Public Hearing, 2022 City of La Sourd Budget. Mr. Robey, good evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. You all know me. My name is Joe Robey, Finance Director here for the City of La Sourd. Tonight, we are going to, as Jasper described to me earlier today, this is kind of the Super Bowl for city finance. So there are no entertaining commercials, but I trust that you'll find this super and entertaining. So first, we're just gonna go through the process a little bit of how we're gonna do this. There are a number of items within the the 2022 budget and levy approval process. On tonight's agenda, we're gonna step through each of them individually. Tonight is also the Truth and Taxation Hearing, which is a public hearing, period of public comment for members of the public who wish to speak on the subject of the levy and the budget. They can do so. So we're gonna start off with our 2022 budget and levy, and then also go through the 2022 capital equipment and capital improvement plan. And then at that point, we will address the, we'll open the public hearing, allow members of the public to speak, and then consider adoption of both the 2022 general fund levy and budget, and then consider adoption of the 2022 CIP and CEP, which again is our capital improvement slash capital equipment plan. And then we'll move on to a few other items that we have, because the fun doesn't stop there. Are there any questions before we get going?
You know, the Super Bowl is just one game. Seems like the World Series.
It is. Well, in a sense, this, the first quarter is just the levy and CIP. So just overall, just a quick timeline review, review in this, for those on the Personnel and Budget Committee. You know, we've talked about all of this ad nauseam for some of them, but in all seriousness, truly appreciate all of their input that they've had on the process going forward into 2022 would be incredibly valuable. So back in September 13th, when this council approved the preliminary levy and budget, and levy increase of 17.41%. Tonight, we're looking to approve the final levy and budget for 2022, following public comment. And then by the end of this month, we have to have our final levy and budget submitted to both La Sourd County and the state budget office for filing. So first, again, we're gonna look at the general fund levy and budget adoption. Overall, in summary, our 2022 proposed levy for the general fund is $3,106,436. This is an increase of $460,288 from our 2021 budget, representing a 17.39% increase. You'll note that the preliminary lobby was a 17.41% increase. We've found some relatively minor savings of .02% in dental premium estimates that came in a little bit lower than our initial assumption. So we were able to knock that down to 100 several percent. And a staff recommendation at this time is to approve the resolution R 2021-048, which is the proposed final general levy budget and property tax levy for 2022. So overall, when we look at our budget and levy, the Personnel and Budget Committee officially picked, kicked off this process back on July 1st and has met a total of 13 times. In addition to conversations that council members have had with staff, questions that have been asked, conversations with community members, and a whole lot of staff discussion about what the 2022 budget will look like. Major considerations in the 2022 budget, and we talked a lot about these items at the November meeting. So some of this is rehashed, but still important to note. Overall, conservative community center revenue projections, the community center just simply hasn't recovered from pre-pandemic membership loss. And so we've baked in more conservative revenue estimates for the community center in 2022. Of course, hopeful that numbers will continue to rebound, and we are seeing an increase in membership. Steady increase, but not what where the community center needs to be at, and that is reflected in the levy for the community center. The recommendation is to maintain contributions to the Highway 169 Abatement Fund, which again is a fund that was established back in 2006 to contribute county levy dollars and city levy dollars for three parcels on the top of the Highway 169 Hill. That would be used for future economic development purposes. And for those who've forgotten, or for me, this was, this is a really unique fund that the city and county established, where we're dedicating all the property tax dollars that are due to the city and county for those three parcels of land into this fund. And historically, the county has contributed their share of tax dollars for, for these three parcels into this fund. The city, in some years, has opted not to contribute those dollars and instead put those dollars into, into operations. And so what we're effectively doing is we're playing catch-up right now, and 2021 was the first year that the city really tried to catch up in its contributions to this fund by funding $170,000, which is more than what the tax dollars are for those three parcels for 2021. But again, we're playing catch-up a little bit to try to firmly establish this fund so that when an economic development opportunity arises, we have some seed money. Probably more than you wanted to know about that, but I think it's important. Another major consideration is inflationary trends. The CPI Consumer Price Index rose 6.2% between October 2020 and October 2021. This is the highest 12-month increase in the CPI since 1990. I think November 89 to November 1990. The city is not immune to inflation. So whether it's, you know, services that we're, we're paying for, goods that we're purchasing, equipment that we're planning to purchase, those are all, those have a real effect on city budgets. And then a recommendation from staff to continue capital funding to avoid deviating from the pavement, the pavement or street and sidewalk plans that have been established by the city. Again, this is a, I would say, a forward-thinking budget in terms of spending dollars now so we don't get farther behind. Cities see what happens when you neglect to, to fund streets and walkways. It, it makes a real difference. And taxpayers can see it too. So it's nice to be able to fund those on a regular basis, get into a routine of establishing a set amount of money that you want to spend every year to keep these major infrastructure components up. And just for reference, our 2021 tax levy for the general fund was just north of $2.6 million. So every 1% every $26,000 you add to that is about a 1% increase. So for the, in the city levy. So overall, this is the tax levy that we're looking at right now for 2022. Our far left-hand column is our 2021 budget. Again, $2.646 million in general fund levy. The proposed budget is $3.106 million for an increase of $460,288 year to year. These are broken out into the base levy, our debt service, and then the EDA levy. And as we discussed in November, overall, we're looking at a general fund, a slight decrease to the overall general fund tax, tax levy, about $88,000, $89,000. The community center and capital improvement and Highway 169 abatement funds all seeing increases. And we'll talk about the community center a little bit. Capital, capital improvement plan, we talked about that in November, and Personnel and Budget has had extensive conversations around capital improvement and, and plans for that going forward. And then again, the 169 abatement, contributing $170,000 this year, the, the recommendation is to contribute $185,000 in 2022, which helps get us a little bit closer to where we need to be from, from a city contribution standpoint. Our debt service overall, just a slight increase year to year. And again, an increase in what our EDA levy is, and our EDA levy, we're allowed to levy a certain dollar amount based upon the tax capacity. So all of these factors lead to the $460,000 dollar increase year to year. This is the estimated tax impact, or the estimated impact of this general fund levy increase to, to residential taxpayers based upon the value of the home. I will say that this does, this is an estimate only, that it doesn't take into account things like homestead exclusion. We are actively working with our counterparts in the county to develop a more robust estimation for, for future years. I would love nothing more than to be able to say, if we include this piece of equipment and a taxpayer calls me and says, this is the value of my home right now, this is how I claim exception to homestead or not, that I could say to them, this is down to the dollar, what, or penny, what your increase or decrease is going to be. We're not quite there yet, but this is the estimator tool that the city has used for a number of years now. So at the level that we'd be looking at right now, the overall average home value of $206,000 in 2021 would see an $18.50 monthly increase to their general fund or to their city tax. So from a city standpoint, we also look at our tax capacity and changes to our tax capacity. And what's interesting and really crucial to, in particular, our residential customers, is what's happening to our residential tax capacity compared to all other areas. Overall, we are seeing it, we are estimating at this point, just under a 3% increase to our total tax capacity within the city. The bulk of that increase coming in our residential space, and that's simply because residential values are increasing at a greater rate than any properties within the commercial industrial apartment, ag, or, or other classifications. So putting kind of the last few slides together into this slide, this is helpful in seeing, you know, from an overall tax capacity standpoint and levy standpoint, where do we fall in relation, where do those fall in relation to each other? So you can see an overall steady increase to our tax capacity over time. We did have a big bump between 2019 and 2020, and for those who are city taxpayers in 2019, such as myself, we remember that when home valuations in the residential space really saw a market increase between 2019 and 2020. That's where we saw a huge increase in our overall tax capacity. As valuations increased, the capacity or tax capacity within that space increased materially as well. Again, we're still seeing an increase here, but the gap between what our 2022 proposed levy and that tax capacity is doing in this year is, is that that gap is narrowing a little bit, because our tax capacity is increasing, but not at the not the same rate that this, our proposed tax levy is increasing. So it's still on par with, you know, we look at 2014, 2018, you know, even 2019. We're, we're, we're right in there. So in years when the tax capacity rate increases at a greater rate than our levy, that gap will widen and, and leave us, you know, in, I know Jasper's referenced in the past, you, you know, before my time even. You know, we were at, here we go, this is our effective rate. The last couple of years, we've been around, you know, 75%. And the, the difference between 19 and 20 at 81% and 75%, you know, the bulk of that is simply in valuation changes. When valuations increase and our levy doesn't increase as quickly, all of a sudden, the, the, the tax burden within that residential bracket decreases, because we're we are, we can not increase our levy materially, but our tax capacity goes up, so we're only taxing at 71% or 75% of the full capacity versus 81%. So something that we watch really closely and something that we try to be as in tune as we can with, with the county in terms of valuations. And I know we've mentioned the Personnel and Budget that Jasper and I met with the County Assessors Office earlier this year, and we're hoping to set up a meeting, if not this month, then next month, to kind of get a pulse on what our 2023 payable looks like in terms of property valuation changes. Because that, again, has a material impact on our residences, our residents' taxes that they pay. So from a general fund standpoint, looking at both expenses and revenues, just some significant changes in expense, we're, we're budgeting a contingency of $100,000, which on paper, I guess, is, is not an insignificant dollar amount, but in proportion to our total tax levy is, is a pretty small amount. And considering where inflation has been heading, that $100,000 can certainly come in handy and helping cover some of those unexpected increases in, in, in purchases that the city needs to make in 2022. We are anticipating increases in our utility expenses. And we'll talk about this in a little bit with our utility rates, but in 2022, the proposal is to eliminate the governmental rate for utilities. So in, up until 2022, the city has been receiving some discounted utility rates for its own buildings and paying itself a little bit less for government buildings. In 2022, the proposal is for that to go away. So some of our buildings, like the community center, will be paying materially more or potentially could pay materially more than they would in the past. So those expense increases have been, have been included in this budget. And then, as I mentioned, inflationary pressures as well. From a revenue standpoint, we're expecting a slight increase to local government aid or LGA, and by slight, I mean really slight, like $8,000. So really immaterial. I guess it's something, but it's really nothing. And then our County State Day Highway grant that we received from the county, we're anticipating a slight increase to that as well. We are budgeting for what we're calling the ARPA funds, or the American Rescue Plan Act, the second half of the COVID relief. We received the first payment of that in June of this year, about $240,000, $220,000. According to the federal government, we should receive our second payment in those dollars in June of 2022, and we are budgeting that revenue in the general fund. With the assistance of that $200,000, which is great, the overall operational tax dollars are decreasing by $83,695. So ideally, we don't budget for one-time money. But we spoke with our auditors, and it was because the revenue is expected, most municipalities are going to budget for these dollars in their 2022 budgets. If we thought there was any real material risk to receiving these dollars, we wouldn't include it in the budget. And I know it's the federal government, so we don't really know, but it has been promised to the cities, and it is common practice now for cities to budget these dollars. So overall, in terms of revenues, we look at our, where we get, the city gets its dollars from. We're anticipating that the general fund will receive $2,817,372 in 2022, an increase of 4.69% in taxes. Again, our levy is our overall tax levy for the general fund operationally will be decreasing a little bit year to year. We're anticipating license and permits fees to effectively be flat year over year. Intergovernmental, so intergovernmental is things like not only our local government aid, but also dollars that we receive from the townships for assessing them for fire department service, things like that. Charges for services, we're being conservative around that. Hopefully, you know, overall, our charges for services, things like public works, services that we rent out equipment, things like that. And otherwise, flat, anticipating flat revenue for the general fund. Here's overall what that looks like in a chart. I mean, it's pretty staggering overall that, you know, the bulk of our dollars come from intergovernmental sources. Then looking at expenditures, it's broken onto a few different buckets here. General government, public safety, once again, as in every year, making up the vast majority. I shouldn't say the vast majority, but making up the bulk of general fund expenditures between public safety and public works. That makes up, you know, almost 75% of our overall spending. And that's where that looks like, public safety and public works, again, making up the, the bulk of expenditures. Are there any questions on the budget levy? And just for clarification sake, no dollars in that have changed from our November review. It's a lot of numbers. It's a lot of PowerPoint, but none of those numbers have changed from our last meeting. So now we'll look at our capital equipment and capital improvement funds, which, if you recall, from our overall tax levy, we do levy specifically for general fund capital spend. And the proposal is $700,000 of capital spend in the general fund in 2022. And for this element, we recommend the adoption of, there's not a resolution for this, but we, as part of the overall budget and levy approval, we recommend adoption of this list right here, which is our proposed list for the general fund capital expenditures in 2022. The total here is just over $730,000 in capital expenditures in 2022. As I mentioned in November, that's a little bit more than $700,000 that we are proposing to levy for in 2022, and that's because of an anticipated surplus that we would have in the capital, capital fund, Fund 420 at the end of 2021. So we would use the balance of that surplus plus $700,000 to make these capital purchases. Again, this list has not changed from our, our November review. The bulk of capital expenditures here are in our street improvement and sidewalk improvement, street improvements at $350,000 and sidewalk improvements at $60,000. Yes. I knew in my mind it was $60,000, but for some reason I was reading a 41.5. So in this chart, again, nothing's changed since November, but just a quick review in the, the, the middle column, the total project cost. That's initially what was requested from staff. And when I say requested, I mean, these are need items. So these are, this is not a wish list. Our wish list is much more than $2.2 million. This is a, considered a needs list from staff. What was ultimately requested is just to the right of that column, there is some, some of these costs that are offset by grants and matching funds. For example, the acoustic- For example, the acoustic panels at the ice arena, hoping to, for a partnership there with Bulldog Youth Hockey Association. And the skid loader replacement. And there's some trade in values that we can recognize, things like that. Ultimately, the proposed local cost for all of these capital items, again, is just over through seven hundred thirty six thousand dollars. And because we're talking capital, we'll talk enterprise capital for, for a few minutes here. As with general fund, none of these dollars have changed since our November review. These all look very familiar to the Personnel and Budget Committee. Enterprise fund capital is funded through the enterprise funds and not through the general fund, which means that they're baked into our utility rates. Because enterprise, enterprise funds are just that. They are funded through sales of utilities, electric, water, wastewater, refuse and stormwater. As we discussed in November, the bulk of our twenty twenty two capital projects for the enterprise funds are at this time planned to be bonded for. There is benefit to bonding for these projects. And if we can roll a, a number of these into a single bond issuance, we can save the city a lot of money. And right now, interest rates, of course, are very, very low. And so even with some bond issuance expense, overall, it can be a benefit to our enterprise funds to bond for a lot of these. The, one of the most significant projects here is our Casaw Thirty Six Project or our South Main Street and West Ferry Street, I guess, technically portion. Our partnership project with, with the county, similar to the Casaw Twenty Two project. But there are components for water, wastewater and electric within the Casaw Thirty Six Project. So in each of these, anything highlighted in red would be at this time, again, planned to be bonded for, borrowed for. Anything in black would be a cash project. Electric can better afford to do cash projects than, for example, our wastewater fund, which we are still building back. So overall, in twenty twenty two, it's proposed that there would be four point seven seven nine million dollars in, in electric capital projects, almost all of which is made up of the Casaw Thirty Six Electric Distribution Work as part of that project. And then the Main Street Substation, work begins on that in twenty twenty three. But there's a lot of engineering and pre-work that would begin in twenty twenty two at our Main Street Substation. Wastewater, a little over two million dollars in capital projects. About eight hundred thousand dollars of that is the Casaw Thirty Six work. Just a number of items on here and, and as Rich will attest to, and I won't call him up to witness to this, but a number of these items have been on the capital list for several years. And we haven't been able to move forward on them. So things like video inspection, some work on our lift stations, things like that, that have been on the list for several years that we just haven't had the funds to, to move forward with. But again, our, our needs to maintain these utilities. Similar story in, in water, there's about a million dollars estimated right now for work involved that would be attributed directly to the Water Fund, Fund Six Oh One for the Casaw Thirty Six Project. And then two point five million dollars related to the High Zone redundant water line, which was on the consent agenda earlier, which the, the High Zone, the redundant water line up to the Highway One Sixty Nine Hilltop area. And then a number of other maintenance items, some of which have been on the capital list for more than one year. Stormwater, so the stormwater fund again was, was just relatively recently established to, to fund work that historically had just been given to the Public Works Department. And proposed to be a fifty thousand dollar stormwater study. And then a portion of the backhoe loader, which you would have seen on the general fund capital list, a portion of that rubber tire backhoe would be allocated to stormwater because they would get use out of it. A portion would be allocated to the electric department because Fund Six Oh Four would get some use out of it. And then the majority of it to the general fund for use by public works. Are there any questions about the general fund levy? The budget for the general fund or the capital plan for twenty twenty two?
Anybody, any questions at all? Mr. Roby, that was a pretty thorough examination of our finances. We appreciate your help. And with that, we go into the open public hearing then.
That is correct. So what we, what we do now is, is open the public hearing with a motion, second vote to open. It appears there's one, one individual here to, to, to make comment on the, on the levy. And then we would then look for a motion, second vote to close the, the public hearing. Then we can go into discussion and adoption consideration of the budget and levy.
This time I'll entertain any motions then to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Schleter, thank you. Any discussion, comments, otherwise all those in favor? Anybody opposed? Okay, this time we will take any comments from the public. And Mr. Dana Allen, we'd like to welcome you tonight.
I'll have to say, I was a little surprised at the lack of any people here. Apparently, I'm the only one worried about an eighteen percent increase in my city taxes. I've been a resident here since nineteen eighty one. I don't ever recall this big an increase before. I, I didn't go back twenty years, but it's a big one. I mean, even with the increase in inflation, it seems excessive. In, in my, in my real world, my real job that I haven't had for a long, long time, I'm sure I sat through more budget reviews than any of you people have. And so when I listen to these budget reviews, everything is just, is just has to be done all the time, it has to be done. And apparently it's, and usually somewhere along the line, somebody says, no, we're not going to do it. I can remember one of my department managers asked me one time, long, long ago, is Lee Woodruff, maybe some of you guys know him, was our regional manager at the time. And he says, is Lee going to ask us to defy inflation again? And the answer was, sure he will. That's just the way it worked. So I'm concerned about the increase. I'm guessing if you do it again next year, you're going to have more people here. One thing that I thought might come out in this review was what is our city tax rate per hundred thousand dollars of residential property? How does that rate compare to adjoining, neighboring cities? Lysander, Montgomery, Bell Plain, St. Peter's probably too big a city to be considered, you know, in that ballpark. But that would be my question, what's, how do we compare? Are we high, are we low? I'm pretty sure our utilities are high. I'm, I'm quite sure of that, without any data, I'm quite sure of that. I guess I'll, I'll, I'll wrap it up by saying, I hope it doesn't happen again. Cause I think that'll be a big deal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. We appreciate your input, we respect your input. We, as the Personnel and Budget Committee over these last several months have been challenged very hard with these numbers. And we're facing some challenges with our abatement program. We've got a pretty aggressive street and sidewalk maintenance program that we, we think it's important to have safe sidewalks and streets for our community. And, you know, we've been facing some rather difficult challenges with the community center also, with the inflation rate and with the loss of revenue with, with a lot of memberships. So we, we hear you, we hear you loud and clear. But we feel that this is a more, pretty much a meat and potatoes budget. There's not a lot of hors d'oeuvres there and there's not a lot of dessert when everything's over. And, and I want to thank our Personnel and Budget Team as, as we worked our way through these last several months. Mr. Sullivan, Mr. Krogman, our city administrator, city finance director. It's a, like I said, it's been a real challenge and, and we do respect your opinion, we do. But with that, I'm going to allow anybody else, if, if anybody else has any comments for Mr., Mr. Allen. Otherwise, I will entertain any motions to close the public hearing.
So move.
Thank you, Councilmember Krogman.
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Swanberg, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. Okay, public hearing is now closed. Mr. Roby.
Thank you, Kirby. At this time, actually, you can still, if there are any other questions or, or comments, otherwise we can move forward with the recommendation.
I'd just like to reiterate my comment from last meeting. I still think it's excessive, three areas that we could possibly do something with. The hundred and eighty five thousand dollars for the abatement, that extra fifteen thousand, is there a reason we bumped it up fifteen thousand dollars? One seventy would keep us on track to having it all paid, correct?
No, so we, and I'm just going to pull this up here for reference. The, as I understand from my conversations with Mr. Kruel and, and you can feel free to, to, to add what you, what you'd like, Jasper. But the one hundred and seventy thousand dollars was to get, begin to get the city back on track. So the, the abatement fund is supposed to, so the, the abatement fund itself, there's no, the abatement will end after, at the end of twenty twenty six. When I say end though, what I mean is the county will stop designating funds specifically for that abatement at the end of twenty twenty six. In theory, the, the city could continue, continue to contribute beyond twenty twenty six. There were, in the first fifteen years of the abatement, up until this year, there are only three years that the city has contributed at least what it is supposed to contribute. And a number of years that was zero dollars. So to get the, I'm just going to pull up the file here so I can give you more exact dollars. But to get the city contribution by the end of twenty twenty six, if, if we want to, if the council would choose to fund the abatement where it should be funded by the end of twenty twenty six, according to what the actual tax dollars were from those three parcels, it would have to be more than a hundred and seventy thousand dollars per year. Hundred and seventy was just to kind of get us going in that direction after several years of contributing nothing. I'm going to pull up some specific figures for you in a moment, if that's okay. So there were, for example, between twenty ten and twenty twenty, on average, the city should have been contributing about a hundred thousand dollars a year. During that same period, on average, the city contributed just over fifty eight thousand dollars per year. So if we contribute, if the city were to contribute a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars to that fund in twenty twenty two, there are several scenarios under which, you know, we could work this right. Again, the city's is supposed to contribute those tax dollars every year. And obviously, the city hasn't, right up until twenty twenty one. It's estimated that those three parcels will generate, you know, between a hundred and a hundred and twelve thousand dollars per year. In order to get us closer, the city would need to contribute at least a hundred and eighty five thousand dollars per year, probably in the neighborhood of two hundred to two hundred and ten thousand dollars per year to close it out by twenty twenty six and be made whole.
Okay, thank you. The other area was a community center. We've got a task force that was put together at the beginning of the year. And as far as I know, nothing has come out of that for recommendations going forward yet. We're still seeing an increase in funds to the community center. And then the capital improvement plan, the streets, I just feel that it's a little bit too aggressive for next year. So I just wanted to reiterate what I had mentioned at last meeting.
Thank you. Real quick, circling back, and I don't want to spend a lot of time on this, Mr. Roby, the abatement, hundred and eighty five thousand dollars. So the public can clearly understand this, that represents about six percent of this increase. Would it not at thirty thousand dollars represents one percent? This is something we're trying to get caught up with. And it's, it's more or less, if you, if you can think of it this way, a savings plan. It's, it's something that's going to pay back to the community down the road. And there's some sacrifices we're going to have to make now to get that, those assets back. But if you look at it that way, is that not close to correct, about six percent?
Correct. If we were to contribute, if the city were to contribute nothing in twenty twenty two, the levy would go down to about ten point four percent. The levy increase, excuse me, would go down to about ten point, so just about seven percent of this year's increase.
So it's, I, I just feel it's very important we, we keep on track with that.
I understand that. I, I just thought with the hundred and eighty five thousand was a fifteen thousand dollar increase. I thought that was trying to get us ahead a little bit on it. I, I didn't know that the hundred and seventy wasn't going to cover what we really needed to do to get caught off.
Thank you. Hi, Mr. Mayor. Yes. Mr. Roby, let's talk quickly about what the return on investment is
Sure.
for that abatement money. I, I think that's one reason we want to make sure we're aggressive and be ready in the future. First of all, what's the return on investment and what would that money be used for? So that people understand the economic development opportunities that it will provide.
Sure. So effectively, back in two thousand and six, the county, the county passed a resolution stating that for twenty years, they would abate their share of the tax dollars for those three parcels. Cambria and Steel and Associates being the owners of those three parcels. And what that equates to right now, of course, twenty twenty two through twenty twenty six are estimates at this point. But the county contribution to this fund would be in the neighborhood of one point two nine million dollars. And the city portion somewhere around one point eight million dollars to that fund. So the end game for both the county and the city back in two thousand and six was that at the end of twenty years, we would have a pot of money, at the time, the estimate was a little bit lower than it is now, just because property valuations have increased and tax dollars have increased a little bit. And Cambria did a development to twenty fifth, or addition in twenty fifteen, which increased the rolls a little bit. But at the end of twenty years, we would have some seed money for economic development in that Highway One Sixty Nine Hilltop area. So that if there were to be a business park or an industry, industry park at, at some point up there, instead of bonding for the entirety of that project, there would be some money to, you know, either incentivize economic development up there or decrease the burden to taxpayers ultimately by setting aside some money during this, this time period. So again, the, the county share of this is over a million dollars, one point two to one point three million dollars that we are effectively holding. The county sends us a check twice a year for their portion of these three parcels, tax dollars to set aside in this fund. And with the expectation that the city will use this money for economic development in the Highway One Sixty Nine corridor.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else have anything? Anybody? Thank you, Mr. Roby. With that, uh, I will entertain any motions to approve resolution R 2021 dash 048, the 2022 proposed final general fund budget and 2022 final property tax levy with a total levy amount of 3,106,436. Thank you, Mr. Huntington.
Second.
Mr. Sullivan, any comments, discussion, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed?
No.
Thank you. The ice habit. Moving on to, um, to approve the 2022 capital improvement plan, capital equipment plan.
So moved.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you. Mr. Huntington, thank you. Uh, any comments, concerns, questions, all those in favor? Hi, anybody opposed? The ice have it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, members of council. We'll move on now to, uh, budget item number three for the evening, the enterprise fund budgets and utility rates adoption. As with November, none of these numbers have, uh, have changed. So overall, at the end of this portion of the presentation, uh, the recommendation from staff is, uh, a motion approving resolution R 2021 dash 049, adopting the 2022 water wastewater, electric stormwater and refuse rates and approving the 2022 budgets for said funds. So first we'll start with rates. For 2022, um, the, uh, here we have the essential water, non-essential or, um, irrigation, um, and hydrant water rates and proposed wastewater rates. Comparing 2021 versus 2022, um, in each of the funds. So there's a, a meter, a monthly meter access fee, which is a base fee that all users pay for, um, access to a meter. And then the usage rates are billed out per 1,000 gallons. And just for review, um, non-essential water or irrigation meters and hydrant meters are not charged for wastewater. Essential water, um, does have a corresponding wastewater charge. And as I mentioned with capital, I should say that with all of these, um, and consult with, um, with Shannon Sweeney from David Drown and our city engineer, these rights, rates, um, do incorporate future capital planning needs as well as operational needs, uh, for the future. Electric, um, these rates are probably more familiar to everyone than any of the other fund rates, uh, because they've been, electric rates were discussed, uh, as far back as, well, mostly these were discussed last year, um, but, um, the, the electric rates were, uh, approved preliminarily back in July um, as part of the overall cost of service study that was done, uh, by DGR. Basically looking just as a review, basically looking at what it costs us to provide electrical service to all of our electrical customers. And as a result of that, uh, there were some new classifications, um, and electric rates that were created that are proposed to be implemented in 2022. Looking here at the residential, small rural and large rural electric rate classifications. Large rural being an example of a new classification that is being built, uh, for 2022. Uh, hence the, uh, not applicables in the current rates, because we don't have rates for those customers right now. Those customers currently would fall into, uh, primarily the small rural class. Oh, and I should say for electric, uh, what's, what's notable here is, in, in part of the goal is, is a simplification of the rate structure. So, um, in 2021, um, the rates have a franchise fee attached and a fee for underground conversion for converting, trying to get, uh, as many of our customers as possible to an underground service versus an overhead service. The rates going forward in electric would, um, have both franchise fee and the underground conversion fee rolled into, um, the per kilowatt hour charge. So those would be eliminated in 2022, so customers would see a base fee, which is their meter fee. And then a per kilowatt hour charge for residential and small rural customers. There will be a, a differential, uh, in the time of year that the electric service, um, occurs, primarily because electric service is more expensive to provide during the summer months. So the rate, uh, is higher in June through September and lower October through May. For our large rural customers, the kilowatt hour, uh, charge is the same year round, but there is a demand rate differential, uh, between June and September and October through May. Moving on to our general service and large general service, um, base fees increasing, um, overall, um, for the, the, the base meter fee. Our general service will have a differential, uh, between the summer months and non-summer months. And our large, uh, general will have a differential in their demand, similar to our large rural customers. Small industrial is a new class for 2022. Excuse me, they will, like our large rural, large industrial, or excuse me, our, um, a large commercial would have a, a rate differential and in their demand rate, um, between summer and non-summer. Our large industrial customers will, uh, have a, an overall decrease in their base fee. And increases to their, uh, kilowatt hour, uh, demand rate, um, in the summer and non-summer months. And then, uh, some changes to their, um, overall rates for kilowatt hour usage, uh, for peak and off-peak usage. Stormwater, so again, storm, the stormwater fund is relatively new, uh, compared to our other funds. We are continuing to add accounts to our stormwater in this, this, just for a refresher, the stormwater, stormwater charge is applicable to all parcels within city limits, even those that are not necessarily, don't necessarily have, uh, a stormwater, service on that parcel. Um, and again, it was established to firmly cement, uh, and establish funds for, uh, for use to maintain the city's stormwater utility. As many cities have done, uh, in recent years, in particular with um, additional, uh, state and federal regulations around managing and treating stormwater, managing what's ending up in our rivers. And in the past, this was just rolled into our public works function, um, or our water function, or our water service. And at the bottom is just a, a chart that there's a, a calculation that goes into establishing how much, uh, is charged and it's currently dependent upon acreage. Long-term, I know there are, um, some, uh, plans to, um, make this a little bit more robust around what type of surface is on the parcel, whether it's an impervious surface, um, a, uh, versus a, a turf surface. For refuse, again, we'll be contracting with waste management. We signed another, uh, contract with them and a contract extension with them last May, and May of 2021. Refuse rates will be increasing, uh, to correspond with the contract. With a slight overall increase to, uh, cost as the city incurs an increased cost to provide the service in 2022. And, uh, just as a reminder, we, we pay tax to the state on refuse collection, but only on refuse. There's no tax collected on the recycling portion of the service that we provide. Any questions on the rates before I go into the funds? This is a lot of numbers and, um, I do apologize for that, but I think it's important, you know, historical context for, for everyone to see. Um, overall with the water fund, and you'll see this is a common theme with our enterprise funds, that we're just not seeing as much utilization within our commercial and industrial space for our water fund. There could, could be several reasons for this, um, as we discussed in November, uh, at the November meeting. Likely, uh, there were, uh, through the pandemic and through, um, operational changes at many of our commercial and industrial users. There were some, um, some decreased usage, perhaps some efficiencies that were realized, and we're just not seeing, uh, the utilization recovery that we, um, would necessarily like to see. So we are conservatively estimating revenue for 2022. Hence the, the, is it 2%, 2% decrease, uh, to our water fund revenue in 2022 over our 2021 budget. In wastewater, a couple of key things to point out here. One is again, the conservative estimate of revenue in 2022 based upon lower utilization uh, in the commercial industrial space. There are some, what may look like wonky numbers between the different, um, service areas, um, in our operating expenses. What, um, credit to, to Rich and his team for really carving out how we spend our money within the wastewater fund. Instead of having a single bucket where all expenses fall, we, they've really started to carve out, um, whether those dollars are being spent on collection, on pumping, you know, treatment plants, um, in the biosolid space. Um, and so what you'll see is that overall, we're expecting a operating expense decrease year to year in 2022. Uh, but some of these, uh, various areas will see increases as we are now budgeting, um, with a more precise allocation of where those funds are being spent. Excuse me, um, in electric, much the same story as in water and wastewater. Lower anticipated revenue, um, and in the electric fund, of course, that also means lower than a, lower, uh, budgeted expenses with the bulk of our expenses in the electrical space coming from our purchased power from MPA. So the less we sell, the less we purchase. In stormwater, um, overall lower expenditures primarily because of, um, of capital. And some increase in, in charges for services as we, um, add new parcels to our billing system. And, uh, due to the, the slight rate increase that was referenced earlier. And our refuse fund, really no material changes here. We'll see a slight increase in, in, in revenue as the, the rates increase. Um, and expenses are expensive for providing that service, uh, the dollars we spend with waste management increase as well. So putting all of this together, excuse me, while there's no, um, average residential user, if we were to, uh, guess or estimate what an average user might look like in the residential space, this is what they might look like, just 5,000 gallons of essential water, corresponding 5,000 gallons of, uh, wastewater, uh, discharge, 850 kilowatt hours of monthly electric usage, um, a half an acre or less of, uh, uh, stormwater, um, parcel space. And then a 96 gallon, uh, refuse container. This is what the 2021 to 2022 utility rate, uh, year to year, uh, would look like for that average customer. So as, as you'll see, uh, and not surprisingly, the, uh, summer months will be, um, more expensive going forward than, than winter months, simply because it's more expensive for the city to purchase power during the summer months, and that is being passed along to consumers in the rate schedule. Where it'll be less expensive, um, there will still be an increase, of course, but the, going forward, the winter months will be, electric usage will be cheaper for, um, consumers in the winter months or the non-summer months, uh, than summer months will be. So this time, uh, we can take questions and then there'll be a recommendation, promotion to approve the resolution. To approve the utility rates and enterprise budgets for 2022.
Any questions at all for, uh, Finance Director Ruby? If not, entertain a motion to approve resolution R 2021 dash 049, adopting the 2022 water wastewater, electric, stormwater and refuse rates and approving the 2022 budget for all enterprise funds.
So moved.
Mr. Sullivan, thank you.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Swanberg. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ice have it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Members of council, uh, moving on to budget item four. And this is, uh, every year, the city council is asked to approve the, uh, the following year's governmental and building inspection fee schedules. This is for services at the building department. We call it building department specifically because they have their own set of fees. And it's quite a laundry list, as I've come to learn, um, that our buildings, uh, building official, uh, Justin Nielsen manages. So in summary for, uh, and there are no changes, um, to the, uh, proposed changes to the building inspector's fee schedule for 2022. For the governmental fee schedule, um, a, a couple of things to point out. For a number of our, um, purchased or rented equipment, um, in the past, we had a set fee for rental for, for that equipment. Because of the, the market, uh, for equipment, the proposal is to, for 2022, use a cost plus 15% for usage of equipment. And for a number of items that are in your packet, um, you'll see that, uh, those have moved to a cost plus 15% for usage. We are proposing a slight increase to the rental of, um, rooms at City Hall. For use of the space as well as the conference room and then the conference room upstairs at City Hall. And then, uh, in conversations with our, uh, police department, we proposed increasing the daily fee for, uh, vehicle impound from $20 to $30 per day. And then, uh, probably the most notable change that's proposed here is change to the community center, uh, rate structure. And we'll talk about that, yeah, right here, in fact. So, um, the cafeteria style or à la carte style, um, rate schedule has been ineffective at the community center since 2019, I believe. And, uh, under that plan, members could purchase a, uh, could kind of pick and choose between various services that they wanted to, um, participate in within the recreation space. So they could purchase, um, a monthly membership to the fitness center alone. They could then add on use of the gym and racquetball courts. They could then add on a membership to the pool or both pools at the time. We had a, a, a number of, uh, staff discussions about this, uh, and discussed at personnel and budget, the elimination of the à la carte and moving to a simpler, uh, rate schedule for use of the community center. Where simply we would have everything within the community center currently, um, under effectively one rate umbrella. So the fitness center, gym and racquetball would now be under a single membership. So if you're a member at the community center, you have to have access to the fitness center, the gym and the racquetball courts, all under one, one rate. Keeping the single two-person and family, we would still, um, honor the discounts that, um, have been proposed in the past for, for, uh, military, for emergency services and for seniors as well. And then the outdoor pool, uh, season pass, um, would, would be the only add-on, I would say. I mean, you don't, you don't, you would not have to be a member of the fitness center to purchase, um, a season pass to the outdoor pool. You could do that, um, independent of any other community center membership that you have. The hope with these rates, um, and with the simplification of the rate schedule is really to try to increase membership at the community center. We've had a number of conversations, uh, with staff at the personnel and budget, and I, I know you've discussed it here at the council table. That memberships just haven't recovered, um, that we have some services that, that we can offer. And a lot of our costs at the community center are fixed. We pay whether anyone's in that building or not. And so any additional person that we can get in that building, any additional member that we can get using those services is really a very small incremental expense to the city. So most of that revenue comes to the bottom line and helps us provide future services, enhance our services and decrease the overall tax burden. That the the general taxpayer is contributing in the levy to the operation of the community center. So when we look back at the community center portion of the tax levy, increasing a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars from 2021 to 2022. Any increase in membership cuts away at that future levy need to operate the community center as it is right now. So overall, membership rates, we'd look at a decrease in the per month, a slight decrease over what they are currently. And if you're a member of the fitness center right now, you would pay less and you would automatically get access to the gym and racquetball courts. The outdoor pool season pass is also a slight decrease from what they are currently. And again, it's a simple attempt to increase membership and increase people swimming in the pool. While also attempting to remain competitive, it's no secret that we have members of our community who find the twenty minute drive to the Gaylord Aquatic Center to be a pretty simple drive for a number of additional amenities that we don't currently offer at our outdoor pool. And so this will allow us to stay competitive with Gaylord Pool in terms of what rates are while offering an option closer to home. Any questions on the fee schedule, either fee schedule?
Appreciate the move to change in the fee schedule. I think that was a contributing factor to the decline in membership. My question would be now, how are we going to market this?
Minister Krugel, would you care to answer that question?
Yes, if I may, it's a good question. You know, we generally approach this through word of mouth. That seems to be the best way to do it, but we do pepper social media, our website. We're going to have a new digital sign on the corner of Main Street and Bridge. We're going to try everything we can to get more people into the facility. Right now, we have a and I'm marketing it right now. We have a membership drive to get people to join. And they get to receive a discount if they if they join in December and commit to 2022. So you know, that that's our pretty much standard method of of marketing it. I don't know if there's additional ideas, ways that we we could market, you know, we're all ears. We want to get the word out that our our rates are going down. We want to get as many people in that facility as we can safely. And really try to get as many people in there and get people signed up and to use the facility. And that'll really, I think, you know, we had that the rec facilities plan on the CIP that just was approved. You know, that'll really drive what happens there as well, because we would really need the community to to show commitment to the facility. And show, I think, city council and the community that that we want to invest in rec facilities. So you know, really what I've found works the best is if a member talks to a friend or a neighbor and, you know, markets that way. But otherwise, we really, we really focus on the social media, Twitter, Facebook next door to to try and get information out about how to even sign up. We're hoping that the simplicity of of the new model for 2022 will make it easier. There's like analysis paralysis of do I do, what what do I do? What membership do I do? What membership do I sign up for? And then he might just walk away. So we're hoping that helps as well as there's this one option, you know, you come in, you can say, I want to sign up and it's not this. Oh, you can do this, this or this. It's like, all right, it's twenty five bucks a month for a single or, you know, it's a little bit easier conversation and and people don't really have to think about it too much. So but you know, as council members, definitely try to try to market it, you know, and and we're going to do the same and and, you know, we we had a meeting, I'll just say today with with Agarpear and leadership from Agarpear, and they were quite interested in a business partnership, which we've been trying to to kind of get our foot in the door there. So, you know, working with our businesses too, to kind of get that into their benefit package under the name of wellness. You know, that's something that we've been trying to do for a couple of years and and we haven't really had any takers, but we'll definitely be taking Agarpear up on on this in the future. So you know, really word of mouth and social media and and trying some new things, but really, yeah, we're trying to get some people in the doors.
Well, I would just make a comment that you you can't put it on social media enough, saturate it, especially when you're trying to generate membership with something new like this. I think people will appreciate you going back to the old model of I have a membership now, I'm in the door, I can do whatever it is I want to do.
And then real quick, Mr. Krugel, can you kind of just touch on some of the advantages with the rec study that we're going to have that that could have, what kind of influence it'll have on the
Yeah, and and council member leader talked about the the task force, and that was one of the things that we're kind of waiting for. You know, patiently from from the city council is this rec facility study is if it's going to happen or not. And really, the 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 idea is that 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 rec facility study will live with the task force. The task force will be the owner of it and kind of drive that home and and facilitate that process. You know, there will be, you know, city council touch points with an RFP and and potential award of the contract to perform the facility study. But really, what we're looking at is how we can partner with the community. So the school district, the businesses, the senior community, how we can partner, get everybody together, what facilities we we think we need or want. And then pair that with our finances that we have as a city or any of the finances related to any of our partners that want to participate. So really trying to get as many people involved in rec facilities in the community as we can and try to maximize the benefit that it brings to the community by 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 forming a partnership. So you know, I anticipate the school being a partner in this and in some way in really driving home, you know, what do we want? You know, our facility that we have right now is 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 fairly old. It was given to us. We didn't have a chance to design it on our own to really meet the community needs. And and how can we do that in a kind of a fiscally responsible manner? That's really what we're going to try to drive home. And we're going to start, I just, I sent myself a note, we're going to start on that almost immediately right now, because I think it's important that we we figure this out by summer of 2022. So that any anything that we want to do, we can, we can talk about with the budget process for 2023. So it'll be, it'll be moving quickly. And I think we have a tremendous group with the task force. It seems to grow every meeting we have. So I think we're up to like twenty five people that are that are now showing up to the meeting. So but but that's kind of the plan and that 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 facility plan will be driven by the task force. And and really, I think it'll paint a picture of what the community wants. And then, you know, the consultants will tell us what we can afford and we'll find a good balance there and and hopefully do some good things for the community.
Thank you.
By going through that management plan, is there potentials for grants down the road? I mean, just so people know that there are some advantages for us, you know, spending that money upfront again to get something down the road.
Yeah, yes, definitely. You know, a lot of people talk about return on investment. And we've done a lot of planning and we've already realized some of those return on investments, right? The biggest one and the biggest ROI we've had is with the downtown master plan. We use that to secure over eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars, you know, and that plan alone was only forty thousand. So that's the biggest win that that I think we can talk about, you know, most recently, but that's the idea is then we can go after DNR grants, playground grants, things like that, where, you know, this forty thousand dollar investment will will reap a benefit, you know, many, many times. Thank you.
Thank you. And good questions.
If I can have one thing on the marketing aspect, and I'm not a marketing expert, but I know dollars and cents. And if if people see this and take one thing away from the the change to memberships. And again, I can't stress enough that, you know, the bulk of of operating that community center is is overhead. I mean, we spend a lot of money heating and cooling and maintaining the building itself. So any additional person we can get in that building is almost goes straight to the bottom line. That for an individual with these proposed rates, I'm just going to head back for a second, with these proposed rates for a single individual, we're proposing twenty five dollars a month. Currently, for fitness center alone, it's thirty dollars a month and twenty dollars a month additional for use of the gym and racquetball courts. So effectively cutting that rate in half for 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 everything. And similarly, for a family membership, currently the rate is a hundred dollars a month for those items. Okay.
Joe, that's marketing. Just get that out.
Yeah, so so we're we're effectively for and for a family, we're proposing fifty dollars a month for those same amenities. Currently, it's a hundred dollars a month. So current members will be saving half, right? And potential new members, family memberships, fifty dollars a month. Half of what it is right now. And for a two person membership, it's not quite going down half. It's going from seventy five dollars to forty dollars a month. So we're trying to make it as affordable as we possibly can to get as many people in that building as 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 we can. Support for that building shows up in memberships and use of the building. And so if the community, you know, wants to support it and wants to see it be successful. You know, we want to get people in there using it.
Thank you. Well said. Anybody else? Otherwise, I will entertain a motion approving resolution R 2021 dash zero five zero approving the 2022 government fee schedule and the 2022 building department fee schedule.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Swanberg. Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Any discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ice have it.
All right, this is where I take over. So Joe is Joe is essentially done. So great job, Joe, on your first budget presentation and you know, we got it.
I think we wrapped her up in game six.
Yeah, so the next two items are related to the city of Lassure pay plan and the performance pay policy. So and these things are essentially approved with the budget, but I I like to have these in the budget presentation so that it solidifies what we have as far as our pay plan goes. And I can, I can talk about it a little bit to the rest of the council, just if there's some new council members that that would like a refresher on it. So the city of Lassure pay plan, we we moved to this in 2019 where we have grades, each position is scored a point value, and then we have a minimum maximum pay that deviated from where we had grades and steps. So now we just have kind of these two moving targets of minimum max pay and we adjust those annually. And and what we do at at the budget process is we we make that adjustment. So in 2021, we made that adjustment. It was four point five percent. So those numbers shifted. I want to make sure it's clear that that doesn't mean that everybody gets a four point five percent increase. That's just what the minimum and maximum values in change. With the performance pay plan, which you'll see next, you'll see that your performance review reflects on what you your pay increase is each year. So on average, we try to determine what we think that average will be in 2021. That was our first year of doing performance pay. And we came in rate pretty much on four point five percent. For 2022, what we're proposing is a shift in that minimum maximum at five point five, which matches up with the next agenda item with an increase or an average increase of five point five. And the reason why we're doing that, increasing it by one percent is because of the inflationary component. So I just want to make sure it's clear. It doesn't mean everybody's getting a five point five percent increase, but the ranges will increase. And I will stress that that helps with recruitment and retention of employees. You know, we have a couple of positions here that will be posting in the beginning of the year, community development director being one of them. You know, people, that's one of the first things they look at. And if we're we're offering a competitive salary, you know, that might get somebody to to look at Lassure and the community more seriously. So it helps me for for recruiting employees, retaining employees. And really, what we do annually is just look at this and and we adopt this table and this now becomes the 2022 pay plan. So what we're looking for with this item is just a motion approving the 2022 city of Lassure play pay plan as described. I'll entertain any questions.
Anybody?
Is there, is there a chart that would let me know how many people are in each grade? And I don't need that tonight, but I was just curious if.
Yes, there is. And I can provide that to you. When we did the compensation and classification plan, each job title is scored. And I can, I can share that. I can share, I'll share that with the with the full city council so that everybody kind of has a refresher on it. But and we have added a couple of positions like the rec, is it rec facility or what is that position? Recreation Maintenance Supervisor, that was a new position that we added last year. So what we do is we get that scored by AEM and then they score that position and then they place it within that scale and then we add it to the list. So I'll send that list out as far as the position titles with the with the grades and then you can kind of compare it to that table. Yeah.
I have one quick question. Would you clarify how this applies or does not apply to our union employees?
Yes, very good question. So our union employees generally follow this, but they might not. So the contract with the each each union supersedes this. This is for non-union employees. So if the union has a different increase, then then that'll be different. So this is for non-union employees, just to be clear.
Mr. Sullivan.
Jasper, just to piggyback back to Swanberg's question, who does the scoring of the positions? Yes, so AEM workforce solutions out of Mankato, they're the ones that did the compensation and classification. It's a standard model that they use. So they look at the job descriptions and depending on the qualifications required for that job. You know, things like, is it supervisory or do they have direct control of budget? Can they spend money at their at their will? You know, they don't have to go through approvals, you know, different levels of of responsibility warrant increases in in that point scoring. So but it's a, it's a standard model that they use. And I can, it is, well, the compensation classification study goes into the details of it. But I I can share that whole study with the group.
But essentially, that's not something we do internally is what I was getting.
Yes, correct. So we stay away from that. We let the, we let the consultants look at the job titles or job descriptions and then score those appropriately. And then this is all tied to pay equity reporting that we're required to do through the state of Minnesota to make sure that there isn't any variation in pay equity for that. So the 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 scores are in the in the pay is associated with with that pay equity as well. So that's one of the reasons why we do that as well. Yep.
Anybody else? If not, we will entertain a motion to approve the 2022 city of Lassure pay plan as described.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Thank you, Mr. Grobman. Any discussion, comments, concerns? If not, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ice have it.
All right, the last item, budget item related is the performance pay policy. So this is the item I alluded to at the for the previous item that we adjust annually as well. So what we're looking at doing is is, and this will become relevant pretty soon here with with my performance review coming up. But essentially, we we have performance reviews of all of our employees. Again, this is just related to the non-union employees. Union have are tied to their contracts. But you see a performance score range between zero and five, depending on what the total score is is where the recommended minimum maximum increase it comes in. Keep in mind that this is completely contingent on the budget that was just adopted. So we can't exceed this. So at the end, it's a really neat program that at the end of it, we I can see what all the managers are proposing for their employees, non-union employees. And see if it ties to the budget, if it exceeds or it doesn't exceed, you know, I can, I can make sure before those actually get approved that that it does tie into the budget, the way that we've 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 adopted it. So and as I said, 2021, first year we did it, it actually worked out really well. We came in pretty much spot on. So what we're proposing in this performance pay scale, there were some like, I call them non-material changes to the actual policy where we're giving ourselves a little bit of time to actually start the performance reviews in January. And instead of starting in in the beginning of February, so we're giving ourselves another month. That was one of the things the managers and supervisors said is that just like a little bit more time to get the the reviews done, which is perfectly fine. But the reviews will 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 be conducted in the beginning of the year and then they will become effective in March. So the second pay period in March is when they will be realized. But really, what we're doing here is with this table, we're increasing all of the values by one percent. And again, that's due to inflationary reasons similar to the the pay plan increases. So they're all kind of tied together. And again, you'll see this, you know, the idea is you'll see this each year and depending on you know, those inflationary components. So let's say next year is a more normal year where we have, you know, inflation around one point five to two point five percent. You'll likely see these values that we have here decreased by one percent. So know that it's kind of all tied together with that. So know that it's kind of all tied together with that regional CPI, and we're kind of, and, and I'm also kind of taking a gut check of the, the regional competitiveness in our area too, with, with some of our neighboring communities. So trying to really keep a, a finger on the pulse of, you know, being able to retain and recruit the employees that we have, because I think we have a really good group here, and, and we want to keep them around. So that's what we're looking for. Really, we're looking for another motion to approve the amended performance pay policy as described. And, and I can entertain any more questions.
Could you go back to the prior slide, please? Jasper, I have a question. You, you talked about adjusting. Let's take the, the top one on the bottom, just because it's simpler to focus. If somebody got a perfect score of five, which is probably unlikely, but do you, are we required to give them an eleven percent increase at least?
We are not. So this is, this is just guidance.
So why do you call it a minimum increase?
Because I need to give guidance to my managers and supervisors as far as what their, their employees should get. At the end of the day, the policy gives me the discretion to stick to the budget. So if, if we are above budget, you know, I'd have to come back to city council and say, hey, you know, I really want to, you know, pay our employees following this plan. We haven't run into it. Generally speaking, I think the average is about three point five-ish, three point six is what we had last year. And I'm going to be tracking the statistics of this, you know, every year to see where this trends to. But, and we have, we've, we've had, I think, three years of prior performance review data that we could look at. So we generally knew what the averages would be. But, you know, the chances that somebody gets a five point O is very slim. Even, you know, really, it's, it's, the range probably maxes out at four point two five and, and to three, so.
My, my concern is it looks like we're requiring you, our, our staff, for a minimum increase. Looks like we have to give them whatever that column reads. That, that's a miss, that should be relabeled in some way, maybe potential increase or some, some other wording. Otherwise, an employee could look at that and say, hey, you didn't give me my increase.
I would agree one hundred percent. That's, that's what the minimum means. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. Maybe, I don't know what we do if we change it to potential or, you know, suggested. I'm, I'm not sure, but I just, I've seen this before and it didn't hit me. It sure hit me tonight.
And I, I don't have the policy up in front of me right now, but conforming to the budget supersedes anything else in here. I know that, that's, that's described, you know, it's, it's all contingent on the budget that's been approved. I think terminology, sure, yeah, we could change it. We could have it be a, a guided range or something like that we could call. And, you know.
Well, if this is part of their contract, contractually, you would have to give them that minimum. And I understand what you're saying about it has to stay within the budget, but then it can't, I mean, I, I don't know how you could have it both ways.
Just to be clear, this isn't part of any contract.
Okay.
Yeah, this is just, this is just our, our policy that we have. So it's not related to, you're, you're right. If it was in the union contract, we'd, we'd have to stick to it, to the T. But because it's non-union, we have some flexibility. So we could change the, we could change the language or the, the title on there to, you know, guided, guided range, guided, guided increase range, something like that. But throw a big asterisk on there, saying that it's contingent on budget approvals.
I, I would agree with the latter. The first part, I think we should, if we're going to pass this, we should define what it is. And I don't want to put it off. I, maybe we could to the next meeting. It's better to get it resolved if we can.
And, and, you know, I don't see it being a potential issue. If it does become a potential issue, I mean, then it becomes a little bit more, it rises to the, to the, to the level of we need to do something. But it, I don't, I don't, I think the risk is very low if we keep it the way it is. If we want to change it, we can. But the fact is, we generally don't see anything exceeding, and, and, and I'm fairly confident that will fall within the budget.
Anybody?
Mr. Krugel, if, if we change the column that says min increase to recommended increase, I'd be a lot more comfortable. How do you feel about that?
I'm perfectly fine with that.
I like Swanberg.
Or if the minimum increase were the range zero to three percent, zero to four percent, zero to five percent, with that asterisk saying, you know, it has to, you know what I mean? I mean, that's the minimum range. And what is the percentage of non-union employees in the city?
Yeah, another good question. It's really about fifty fifty.
Okay.
Yeah. So we have, I think, I think.
And our total number of employees is?
Thirty-eight.
Okay.
Right now, and I think we have, I think we have twenty union employees. I'd have to go look back, but it's generally about fifty fifty.
Let me ask you a question. I, I don't want to nitpick this, but I do think it's really critical that we make it very clear. We're dealing with employees. We're, we don't, discretion sounds wonderful, but if you have a policy, people know what can, they can expect. What would happen if we deferred this to our first regular meeting in January?
I think that'd be just fine. These actually don't go into effect really until March.
And we simply have the staff propose that without having to make a motion to table this thing? We haven't had a motion, really.
It, it cracked, yeah. And we're just really looking at, what do we call the column heading?
We can work that through, though. PBC could help you with it, or you can have a chance to kind of ponder it.
Can we just change it to recommended salary range increase?
I, I would agree, but if he doesn't want to do it right away, that's all I'm saying.
I'm perfectly, I think that's, that's perfectly appropriate. You know, this is something that we developed last year. You know, I'm perfectly fine with adjusting the, the terminologies. It's kind of, it's a living document. It's, it's not set by anything. But if you, if you feel that, that would, that would be more clear to the employees, I would agree, and I, I would say we can do that tonight.
Would you, if I may, Mr. Mayor?
Please, go ahead.
Mr. Sullivan, would you repeat what you, what you said, recommended?
Yep, I would, I would remove minimum and max, those two headings, and just put recommended salary increase range with an asterisk contingent upon budget.
That's what I was looking for.
So I will go ahead and make the motion with that wording, Jasper.
Motion's been made. You want to repeat it one more time, Mr. Sullivan?
Remove minimum and max increase. Recommended salary increase.
Range.
Range, salary range increase contingent upon budget. An asterisk for that.
Very good. We had the motion made. Anybody want to second that motion?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Schleter. Any other comments, concerns?
Did you get all that?
Yep.
I, I thank the city administrator for your patience with this. I think we really, we're, we're doing our job, and I, I appreciate your willingness to help us figure out what to do.
And thank you for everybody's comments on that and making it a little more clear, so.
I would like to see the rubric too for the evaluation.
Yeah.
So we had a, a motion made by Mr. Sullivan, a seconded by Mr. Schleter. Any comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? Very good. The ayes have it. And then the last item on tonight's agenda would be the comments, reports, items of appreciation. This is your council's opportunity to share with the public anything that's going on in the community with your commissions. And at this time, we will start with Councilmember Huntington. Do you have anything to share?
All right. I have three. On December third, we had MRVT short meeting. We had to redo a resolution for a purchase of a new bus. Just to make clear on that, it was a ninety-eight thousand dollar purchase. A majority of it went through Mindate Grant and County, I think, correct? What was the other percentage? Was it all Mindate? Okay, Mindate Grant. And then on December seventh, I had a ARPAK meeting, which I found out it was vice chairman of. We had two new members, two new members to join the group. I'm going to do my best to remember their names here. Thomas Mercer, he's been with our city for about eight months, I guess. And Brayden Redus, he's been a resident of La Sourd for about eight years, and they both just joined. And we nominated Rosie Goggan as the new chairperson. Coming up. And then on December ninth, I had a planning zoning meeting, which I was just a observer as a city council. We did the Woods Dry variance, which was in our consent package today. We talked about a city forum, which is coming up sometime in twenty-two, first quarter, and talked about the utility plan that's going to go on the some plan. Was it?
Yep, so the, paired with the transportation plan, which we've already adopted, the planning commission looked at the utility plan and made a recommendation that'll go to council likely that first meeting in January for approval.
And then also, there's two members of that group that are leaving our group. The chairperson, Jack Roberts, is leaving, and Andrea, I don't ever say her last name.
Fatchis.
Faches is also leaving. So we are looking for new members for the planning zoning. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huntington. Mr. Krogman.
I get the privilege of now being the second. Thank you, Mark. I used to have to be the first and had to be ready. I'll be the first to say it. I'm sure other council members will join in. We had a fantastic event on Friday night, the second, with the Christmas in the Valley. The city staff, I think I'll focus at this point, did a tremendous job of helping the organizers of that event. I won't mention all of them at this point, but not, I mean, the other organizations. But a great event shows you again just the, the value of our new Main Street. It was really amazing to watch what happened on Main Street. So that's that. And then the second thing I have is that the airport commission will be meeting on December twenty-first. We'll be having our quarterly meeting at that time. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Lozey's absent tonight. Mr. Schleter.
Since the last meeting, I had two region nine development meetings going over the comprehensive economic development strategy for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-six. I have forwarded the preliminary plan to the city administrator for him to share with the EDA and the planning commissions. And I was also impressed with the community turnout for the parade.
Thank you. Mr. Sullivan.
I guess I have nothing to report, as Mark touched on transit, but I do want to thank everybody for their involvement with the parade and festivities on the second.
Thank you. Mr. Swanberg.
Yeah, to piggyback on that as well, I'd like to thank everyone who was involved with that holiday parade. Unfortunately, I was out of town, but followed it through social media, and there were tons of smiles. And it was awesome to see the turnout that we had. Also like to thank the personnel and budget committee. I know the time and effort you folks spend on that is a lot. And I truly appreciate that being a first-year council member, rely on your folks' expertise. So thank you for that. Thanks also to Joe for your presentations, attention to detail. Thank you very much. And that is it for me.
Thank you, Councilmember Swanberg. I appreciate it. Me, I, just on a personal note, I missed our, our second meeting of the month in, on November. I had a niece tragically killed in a car accident in Spokane, Washington, twenty years old, Bridget Kirby. So I want to thank Councilmember Krogman for taking the meeting over when I was absent. I want to thank the community for their outpouring of support, and I want to thank the City of La Sourd for the nice card I received today. So thank you very much. And with that, Administrator Krugel, anything?
Recession before we go on. Yes, absolutely.
Yeah. Um, no, I don't, I don't have anything other than, yeah, the, the community event was great. And I thank everybody for all the work they put in for the budget and the utility rates and everything else to get twenty twenty-two set up. Looking forward to, to that year. I think we, we're going to continue the progress that we've made. And, and, you know, I'm, I'm excited for what that'll do for the community. I think we're, we're, we're making some good strides. And I think people are noticing it, and, you know, it's all, it's all good things, and, and I appreciate all the work everybody's doing.
Thank you. Do we take a motion to close the meeting?
I, I, what I would do, if you're going to do a motion for recess, I would do a motion for recess to come back in ten minutes, five minutes, something, whatever you want to do. And then as soon as we get back, then we will close the meeting. We'll keep the, the, the broadcast going until the meeting is closed. And then from there on out, yeah, the broadcast will be over, but then after the meeting, we'll, we'll open it back up and then adjourn.
Okay, how about a motion to recess for five minutes?
So moved.
All those seconded, seconded. Mr. Krogman, thank you. All those in favor?
Hi.
I mean, anybody opposed?
Stacy coming with paperwork now, or you have it?
I have.
Our re- are we on?
Yep.
Our recess is over. Our meeting is now resuming. At this time, I'll entertain any motion to, uh, close the meeting, uh, pursuant to Minnesota statute 13D dash 05, 13D dash 05, sub, uh, division three. The city council will hold a closed meeting to discuss the city administrator's 2021 performance evaluation. So that, Mr. Sullivan has made a motion, seconded by Mr. Krogman. Thank you very much. Any discussion, comments, concerns? Otherwise, all those in favor?
Hi.
Anybody opposed? The ice have it. Thank you.